Buenas in Hafa Day. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this public hearing to order. The time is now 5:13 PM, Tuesday, July 18, 2023. In compliance with open government law, notices of today's hearing were broadcasted on KUEM, published in the Guam Daily Post, and provided via email to senators, stakeholders and the local media, and also posted on the government of Guam Public Notices website on Tuesday, July 11 for the five-day notice and July 16 for the 48-hour notice. I'd like to acknowledge my colleague Senator Telotai Degui, who has joined me here today, as well as Senator Joanne Brown. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on Bill Number 149-37COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, as an act to add a new Section 1221, Division 4, Chapter 12, Title II, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations Relative to the Adoption of Rules and Regulations Providing Temporary Expedited Procurement Protest Procedures for the Acquisitions Funded with American Rescue Plan Act Education Stabilization Fund or Head Start Grant Moneys Allotted to the Guam Department of Education. The rules of conduct are as follows. Individuals testifying today are asked to provide my staff a copy of your testimony upon signing in so that they can disseminate accordingly and efficiently. Those providing oral testimony will first be recognized by the chair, and please state your name for record-keeping purposes. Senators will be given opportunity to ask questions for each individual testifying. Questions and testimony must be compliant to the substantive nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. So now to begin our agenda, to hear her testimony on Bill Number 149-37COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, as an act to add a new Section 1221, Division 4, Chapter 12, Title II, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations Relative to the Adoption of Rules and Regulations Providing Temporary Expedited Procurement Protest Procedures for acquisitions funded by the American Rescue Plan Act Education Stabilization Fund or Head Start Grant Moneys Allotted to the Guam Department of Education. So just an opening statement. So Bill 149-37 is a codified version of regulations promulgated by the public auditor as part of the requirements of Public Law 37-6, which was modeled after a temporary expedited protest procedures that were used successfully during the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. The intent of these expedited procedures were, in the case of a protest, to expedite the use of federal funds before they expire in December 2024. The stakes are seemingly higher now in 2023. During this morning's public hearing, we had an opportunity to hear that approximately two-thirds of Guam public schools are deemed not ready to open due to noncompliance with sanitary requirements. Should there be a protest for projects funded in whole or in part by ARPA, education stabilization or Head Start grant funds, the expedited procedures can be used to ensure a quick resolution and timely procurement of much-needed capital improvement projects. So just to recap some of the key points in the Public Law 37-6. So it states that notwithstanding any other provision of law, the procedure for initiating a protest shall be the exclusive means available to resolve the concerns of persons aggrieved in connection with awards or solicitations funded in whole or in part with moneys allotted to GDOE from ARPA, education stabilization or the Head Start grant. And these expedited procedures shall be prominently designated as such in the notice and solicitation, and all prospective bidders, offers and contractors shall acknowledge and sign an affidavit stating that they are aware of the expedited process and agree to abide by the rules and deadlines outlined in the process. Additionally, if the protest is not resolved by mutual agreement within 20 days of the filing of the protest with a public auditor, the public auditor shall issue a decision in writing no later than 20 days, not including Saturdays, Sundays or holidays. Additionally, it states that the public auditor's decision and determination of facts resolving the protest shall be final and conclusive, no right of appeal or judicial review. And this bill was a temporary, and so it would be effectively repealed at the end of the expiration date of the ARPA moneys, availability of ARPA funds. So we did receive a fiscal note. It says it's administrative in nature. We did send out notices to invite to provide testimony to the Attorney General's office, the public auditor, Department of Administration Director Byrne, Chief Procurement Officer Claudia Ray and the Superintendent of GDOE, Dr. Kenneth Swanson. So I now like to call upon everyone here who's going to provide testimony or support. If you can please come to the front table, and I will call you, I'll call you one by one. So if you can all come up, we only have, so we have Public Auditor Benjamin Cruz, Dr. Swanson. We also have Sedri Lausangan and Graham Botha, who's representing the Attorney General. We can also invite Franklin Cooper Nurse, Jerky Hernandez, Joe Sanchez, if you would like, there's a lot of room, so please come up. And if there's anyone else that we missed, please come up to the table if you would like to provide testimony. Okay, so this really is an opportunity to bring transparency, right, to this process, and also to provide an opportunity for possible amendments that is aligned with this public law. Please note, the codification of the promulgated regulations were done to make some technical corrections, which particularly were numbering. We found some duplication in numbering. As far as the original regulations, nothing has been changed. We did also do something with the contents, table of contents. We updated the table of contents, so it's really just technical amendments. Nothing changed as far as the actual verbiage of the regulations. So all original language has been kept intact, otherwise. So I think it's important, so I would like to recognize Public Auditor BJ Cruz. I appreciate if he can talk about the process so that the public is aware of what these expedited procedures are.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. As you have mentioned, these rules and regulations were written by the Office of Public Accountability pursuant to Public Law 36-7. We wanted to model these rules after the rules that were used in 2010 and 2011 when Ara was around, and trying to get those funds utilized in a timely fashion. You gave us 20 days to get a decision out, so consequently, we have a very short timeline in it. In regular appeal, the record on appeal is due within five days of the filing of the appeal, and sometimes it can be extended if the procurement record is extensive. These rules require that the procurement record be kept contemporaneously with the whole process, so that if and when an appeal is filed, that the following day, or within, yeah, I think it was one day or two days, the record on appeal, the procurement record, has to be at the public auditor's office so that we can start reviewing it. At that point, the parties will be notified that the appeal has been filed and be given an opportunity to file motions. The public auditor will then make a determination as to whether or not there needs to be a hearing, will conduct a hearing, and we have made the representation to the legislature when they were adhering on the bill that resulted in Public Law 36-7, that we would make ourselves available to do everything within our power to make sure that the decision came out within those 20 days. So I know that I'm going to be stuck on island for a while if this bill passes to make sure that all the hearings are done, but that was the commitment that I made to the legislature, and it was a commitment that the Office of Public Accountability was willing to undertake to assist the Department of Education in making sure that all of these funds are spent within the next 15 months. I guess I'll listen to the critique of the rules that we've promulgated, and there is no pride of authorship, and so we are more than willing to accept any recommendations to improve the rules. We were told, or at least 36-7 told us, that the decision had to be by the 20th day excluding Saturdays and Sundays, and so we tried as much as possible to get everything in within those 20 days. A regular procurement under the regular rules gives us 120 days, and so this is considerably truncated. But in trying to meet the requests of the legislature in 36-7, we tried to fashion the rules in such a way that we could issue a decision by the 20th day. So I'll answer more questions after everybody's had a chance to air their concerns about the regulations as written.
All right. Thank you, Public Auditor. So I guess we'll ask questions. We'll have the members give their testimony first, and then we'll follow up with questions. Okay, next I would like to offer the opportunity to Attorney Graham Botha for his comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Senators. We will be submitting written testimony later, but I just wanted to say that we'll have a few comments on the bill, but in noting some of the concerns raised by GDOE, we understand the intent for the public auditor to render a decision within 20 days, but I would say even from my past practice that two days to produce the procurement record may be quite a short time. I mean, the normal time is five days, and sometimes, depending upon the size of the procurement record, and obviously the bigger procurements, you know, the procurement record with many more bidders is usually longer, so I mean, five days might be more realistic. I understand that would cut into the time of the public auditor, but it's just that, you know, there's still a requirement to provide a written record, and so sometimes, as the public auditor knows, that in my previous job, I've provided numerous binders, and it's just physically difficult for the procurement staff maybe to do all those. A smaller procurement may not be as much of a challenge, but, not enough, okay, but that's just a challenge with that. I know this was done previously for the Ara funds, and certainly that seemed to have worked out well for that particular thing. I don't believe the timeline was quite as aggressive for that, but in this case, I do understand the funds need to be spent by September 2024, so that may be a challenge as well, but we will certainly consider that. If there are any other questions, we'll submit written comments, just any clarifications we may have for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Botha. Yeah, just a clarification. So the education stabilization grant money, I think the deadline is in September.
Right.
The ARPA funds is in December of next year.
December 2024 for those, yeah.
And I believe the Head Start already, it already expired at this point, if hopefully that's not the case. But if you don't mind, I would like to proceed with the agencies, and then we'll have Mr. Lausangan. So I'd like to recognize Superintendent, you know, welcome to Guam. Yeah, so first I'd like to recognize you for your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Chairperson, and I thank you to the members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 149-37COR relatively to the adoption of rules and regulations providing temporary expedited procurement protest procedures for acquisitions fund with ARP and ESF or Head Start moneys allotted to the Guam Department of Education. The bill establishes the rules and regulations for providing temporary expedited procurement procedures for acquisitions with ARP, ESF and Head Start grant funds, as noted in Public Law PL 37-6. I would like to acknowledge that the GDOE fully supports the intent of the legislature to assist the department in expeditiously expanding grant funds that are set to expire. As you know, our ESF II grant expires September 2023, and the ARP grant will expire in September 2024. Grant funds that are not otherwise expended by the expiration are subject to be returned to the granting agency. GDOE is working diligently to timely obligate and expend these funds. However, the procurement process can be delayed with extended procurement stays and protests. This bill provides for efficiencies in the process by expediting the protest procedures for the ESF, ARP and Head Start grants. With that said, we do have suggested amendments to the bill. Section 12217G procurement record requires GDOE to provide a procurement record to the public auditor within two days of the filing of the protest. In some cases, procurement records can be quite voluminous and contain thousands of pages. The timeframe may be a challenge when photocopies of these large records must be produced. Additionally, certain records may have confidential portions which may require in-depth review. We would recommend that this section be amended to allow GDOE to provide the procurement record to the public auditor within five days of the filing of the protest. Section 12217H response to protest requires that the interested party and GDOE shall have seven days from the filing of the protest to file the response to the protest. We would like to request for 10 working days from the date of the filing of the protest for GDOE to file the response to the protest. Additionally, we would like to note that the procurement exceeding $500,000, we recommend the Attorney General be afforded an opportunity to review and provide a response, as GDOE attorneys are no longer designated as Special Assistant Attorneys General. Section 12217L Notice of Expended Procedures contains the language to be included in the notice of solicitation. We would like to note that the language to be included in the notice is rather large for a newspaper publication. We would recommend for the publicized notice to be abbreviated as follows. Notice of expedited procedures for resolution of protests or procurements funded in whole or in part with funds allotted to GDOE from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, Education Stabilization Fund or Head Start grant. Thank you again for introducing this measure and for the opportunity to provide our testimony today. We iterate our support for the bill and appreciate the legislature's action to assist GDOE by expediting the procurement process procedures for acquisitions funded through ARP, ESF and Head Start. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Swanson, and I'd like to recognize Sedri Lausangan for his testimony.
Yeah, I strongly oppose this bill, Madam Chair. First of all, Section 1, the legislative findings and intent, there's no reason why we are authorizing the public auditor to adopt new rules and regulations. But the Superintendent explained that the funds could expire or could lapse. That answered my concern, but there's still a way. You can always ask for extension, not to the federal government, whoever has the oversight on the funds, not sacrificing the due process, because this bill simply put us on the medieval times, like we were in the Middle Ages. You know, we're making the public auditor like the king. Yes, he's the king. Whatever he say cannot be bended, because whatever is his decision, there's no appeal. You cannot go to the Superior Court or to the appellate court. This is a very bad bill, inappropriate for our current generation, our time. Especially, we are not perfect. He could make decision that is not fair, that is partial, and the worst thing is making decision or violating the law. Because my company, I represent my company, I filed four cases against two agencies, to the OPA, and it was dismissed by the hearing officer. You know, the hearing officer has no jurisdiction over, has no authority over jurisdiction. He's a hearing officer, his job is to hear the case, not to make decision on jurisdiction. That's the duty of the public auditor, it's all in the law, but the public auditor allowed it two, three times, you know? And not only that, even the public auditor made that decision that I don't have jurisdiction to represent my case, that's still very wrong, because it's very clear in the law that any officers of the company can represent their business to the OPA. If you don't agree with this decision, then we file to the Superior Court. Very, very simple, but he chose to violate the law, not hear my case and tolerate the wrongdoing of the procurement officials. On those four cases, I'm not even asking any monetary damages. All I'm asking is for the procurement officers to undergo work session, to educate them on procurement law, because where can you find, like UOG, awarding the bid on the day of the bidding, right away, after the bidding? And the vendor even lacks the proper documentation, you know? And then the DOE imposing regulation or policy, like for example on the delivery date, just like the cafeteria table, they're requiring 60 days, that's almost a million-dollar job. And the factory, all manufacturing in the mainland, because of the current situation by the time of COVID, can only manufacture it in 60 days, and then you have travel time. So how the heck they come up with the 60 days delivery to Guam? Then they want us to ask or request to them, beg for mercy that we need extension or else we're gonna be liquidated. That's the problem. You know, all the vendors are asking to extend the delivery on the question and answer, because it's not reasonable. But again, the public auditor, instead of hearing my case, correcting the procurement officers, tolerate the wrongdoing and dismiss my case. So how do you expect him to not to abuse his authority? And then he has his staff, Mr. Hernandez, that doing all the decision, making the decision on the motion, he's not a public auditor, he's only a staff. You know, they need to be investigated, or this office has the oversight on the Office of Public Accountability, because they come here for the law to be amended. They cannot be above the law also, of what is in the law, they should follow. If they want, if they want the officers of the company, of the business, not to represent their company, then they need to go to the legislature and have it amended. The hearing officers' argument is that there's a Supreme Court decision. No, it's out of the picture, that's not the proper channel. It's an office of accountability, it's independent institution, free from the court interference. You know, if they have problem with that, then they go to the Superior Court. And then the hearing officers, they are not judges, they cannot break the law, or they just have to follow what's their duty to hear the case. You see, that's my main concern, you know? You need to throw this bill and let the due process take its course, and conduct an oversight hearing, because up to now, they have overturned this decision. You know, a lot of businesses cannot represent their company to the OPA. They require us now to have a lawyer, to represent by lawyer with another cost for a small business like me. You know, it's very easy to represent the company, so what if we don't have the knowledge of a lawyer? But it's in the law. And what they're gonna dismiss my case for, because I'm not a lawyer, because that's the reason, because of lack of jurisdiction, you see? That's why I said I'm very disappointed with this bill. Maybe you don't know about the situation, but oversight hearing against the OPA is a must, is justified because of the wrongdoing they committed from the public auditor to the staff. They need to be heard too, you know, what they're gonna say on those violations. Yeah, because they're making the OPA like a court, like a tribunal. You know, they're not tribunal, they're an independent body made by Guam law, you know? That's why the hearing officers represented by Attorney McDonald and another attorney made a major mistake, which was tolerated by the public auditor. That's why I strongly oppose this bill, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Does that conclude your testimony, Mr. Lausangan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I strongly clarify my point, that the power could be abused, and if you don't want one guy be the king, all his orders got to be bended. You know, the constitutional right of a person is being violated, the due process of law.
Okay, I appreciate, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but these regulations are really aligned with the public law that was already passed. So I think what your issues are is with the public law, not with the regulations, unless you can read the regulations and see if it addresses any of those concerns that you might have. So, I mean, I would recommend if you could take a look at that closely, there might be something in here that can address some of those concerns, but as of now, I think, you know, what you're saying is more akin to what the public law is doing, and what these regulations are is aligned with what was already passed. But I do appreciate your being here today.
I disagree, Madam Chair. My point is you cannot put all the power to one person, that could be abuse.
Understood, understood.
Because you're making him make the decision and it cannot be subject to appeal, to the Superior Court or to appellate court. What everybody said is, that's the law.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lausangan, for your testimony. So I just maybe perhaps, if there's anything I want to give the opportunity to the public auditor, if he wants to make any comment at this time? Okay. All right. So I guess I have a couple of questions about the So I guess I have a couple of questions about the regulations. And one of the things that I saw was perhaps definitions. There would need to be a definition for capital improvement. Do you think there's a need for that, as well as for interested parties? Because that was used. If you would like to, I mean, we have done research on potential definitions, but I think those should be defined. Do you have any suggestions for that?
I'll have the office submit written definitions for both of those.
Okay. And then as regards to the timelines, as far as extending procurement records being provided in five days, is there any issues with your office on that?
I was just trying to make it so that we have the 20 days to give us time to review the responses and to review the, to read the record. I mean, if they're saying it's going to take a long time to compile it, I'm gonna have to read it. And so I need as many days as possible within that 20 to try to address it. And I have been trying to get the agencies to understand that the law says that the procurement record has to be kept contemporaneous with the procurement. It is not to be, it is not to be put together after a procurement appeal. It should have already been there. Everything that happened today, every, every email on that procurement, every phone call, all those memos had to have been in the procurement record by the close of business today, for today, not in two weeks when the procurement protest is brought up to go, oh, I have to go back and look at my, my email to find the emails on those, that it's supposed to be in there. And when people protest and say the procurement record isn't complete, they're probably correct because really seriously, the procurement record should be complete by the close of business every day. It should be if it's contemporaneous. But if, I'm not gonna fight them on five days, but I'm just saying, if it's gonna take them a while to copy two binders full, I'm gonna have to find additional days to read the two binders also before I can issue a decision.
Okay. That's a very good point. Is that something that DOE can practice? Is that a possibility that, you know, you keep the file, it's a live file, right? And you just keep everything in order?
That's obviously a best practice procedure that we would love to be able to afford ourselves to implement. Unfortunately, with the volume, the capacity, the training, the turnover, and just the staffing requirements to do that, we are challenged to maintain those files. And I do get the law and the requirements for not building the record after the fact. We do our best job in making sure that procurement record is obviously complete. But as we go through, again, the volume of transactions, when you have 600-plus million dollars of federal grants, in addition to the 200-plus million dollars provided from the local government, our portfolio of funds is about over 750. A big portion of that goes to procurement. I believe, Carmen, is it 13, 13 staff? We currently have 13 staff in our office. So again, the daily routine of getting those things done is gonna be something that will be challenging, but we do recognize the need for it and the importance of building that process, and that's something we'll strive to do.
I mean, the thing is, these are expedited procedures, so, you know, I guess it has to be done, right? That we have to make sure these files are ready to go if we want an expedited resolution. Let's see, any other questions?
If I might make a comment also. In the past, a lot of the time was spent in getting the procurement record copied and numbered. We have amended the rules to include that we will accept electronic copies of the, of the e-filing of the procurement record, so you don't have to photocopy two binders full, just scan it and send it to us. But again, I'm not gonna fight over two days and five days. I'm just trying to impress upon the committee that we wanted to write the rule so that we would live within the 20 days, that we had promised the legislature we would try to work out.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Maybe we could do an up to certain amount of days, and if you can get it done quicker. Okay, the other thing is the AG. So in your, in your testimony, you mentioned involving the AG in this process. So how would that, how would that be?
So just my understanding, and as we go through the process, anything over 500,000 goes through our legal review. So as the protest comes to GDOE for decision in addressing the appeal, we wanted to make sure that we're afforded the AG the opportunity, who signs off and the legal counsel, because our counsel no longer has that certification. So we just wanted to proceed in a cautious manner to make sure that we're on the same page. Usually, we go through legal when we respond and get guidance, and we want to make sure that we do continue to follow that process and have that assurance.
Okay. And yes, public auditor.
I'm afraid that the department is misreading the law. The law, I was the author. The law requires that if you notice that it's going to cost over 500,000, the Attorney General's office has to be included from day one. Has to be included from day one. If the Attorney General is, is not included on, after you have the determination of need and you see that the amount's gonna be over 500,000, you better notify the Attorney General to appoint somebody to be the one that goes through and says, the checklist for your RFP should include these 149 things that we have on our checklist. Don't use your checklist, use our 149-point checklist and make sure that they're involved every single day. This is not something that they can do on their own. The 500,000, the Attorney General's office must be included in that discussion. If you know it's gonna go over, don't, don't, if it's 480, and you think, oh, and then all of a sudden it goes over 500, they can, they can throw that right back and just say, we weren't included from the beginning, it's an invalid procurement. So please, note that the law requires that if you, if you, if you recognize that the procurement is gonna be over 500,000, the Attorney General's office must be included in every step of the proceeding.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Superintendent.
Absolutely agree. And just for the record, we do. And we do go through the AGs. We do have an assigned AG as of late, who's been helping us through the process, who checks in with GDOE on a weekly basis, is my understanding. So on the onset, when we do have a determination of need, when we are scoping out the scope of services, once we are aware that it meets the dollar threshold requirement, those are worked internally with our attorneys that communicate directly with the AGs and have that involvement. And again, there is a specific AG's checklist that we also use in reference.
Okay. Just to clarify too, just a response to the protest. So it says seven days. Does, so did your, was your intent to include seven calendar days or seven working days?
I think it was seven working days.
Okay.
But I just, I want to be everybody's interest. The reason why I'm, you have a big, with.
Good appeal, I mean, appeal, or good protest. I need to read all of that, and I need to go through the procurement record before I can issue a decision on the 20th day, so.
Okay, appreciate that.
That's why I shortened all the time. As I said, a regular procurement, as Mr. Bolte will attest to, I can get my decision out within 120 days. And this is now 20 days that you're stating in law.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, public auditor. I think those are my questions. I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues, Senator Telo Titegwe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to you and my colleagues. And good evening, everyone. I know it's been a long day, especially for DOE. You've guys have been from one place to another to another, so I'm gonna make my questions just really quick here. So first, the third-party fiduciary, what part will they play in this, this whole procurement?
So they are the fiduciary agent, so they actually have access to funds release and funding approval. So as we go through the process, we align ourselves with all Guwam local laws to include all procurement laws. And then on funding, release, and payment, they hold the checkbook. So they give us the final drawdown and approval payment.
Okay, so we will have them on board. Now, Speaker B.J., the R funding in 2010, that was, I think, what year was that? Was that 2010, the R, when we were?
2009 through 2011.
Okay. So when that was going through the process, the rules and regs that you have here, or the guidelines, are the same ones that you mentioned in 2000?
Not exactly.
Exactly. What was changed?
There wasn't a written set of rules then, they just.
They just did it?
They just did it. And you required me to write rules, so I wrote new rules.
Did you follow the same procedure? Or was there anything substantially different or that you saw when the R funding was being, when we were going through that process and trying to avoid all these issues?
When we looked back on the record, there was only, there was less than five protests during that period. And the office was able to get decisions out within 15 to 20 days.
Okay.
I don't know how they did it, but they did it. And so we're gonna try to see if we can get that, do the same thing.
I think the, you know, going from calendar days to working days is probably gonna avail the DOE to have that extra two days that they need that they requested earlier. So that being said, you know, procurement and protests have been, you know, a longstanding issue for the government of Guam, and our inability and adequacy to address, it has brought us, you know, to a point where we're focused on passing these laws that would help to expedite. You know, I'm, I'm one that really likes transparency, I really like the process to take its course so that all fairness is put into play here, you know? And no one goes beyond, you know, the scope of things that have been in the past have proven to be not only fair, but, you know, justified. So, but I truly believe that, you know, we've had a great example in the R funding, that we need to follow this kind of process. And I don't think it's gonna be the last time we do this, so this is gonna be our template for the next time we come into a situation like this, so.
And in full transparency, senators, though the law says that there's not to be an appeal to the courts, I don't believe that we're gonna be able to enforce that. I think they will always have a right to appeal to the court.
Absolutely.
Though we may say in the process that we, that there's not, that this is gonna be final, if they decide that they're going to go to the courts, there's nothing that I can do or say that's gonna stop that.
Stop that, right. Everybody has their time.
And so I need, I need to put that on the record, that though the law says that we want it to be the final, I don't believe that I can give that, so that power to myself.
Well, even in the section here of the law that says that exclusive jurisdiction?
There's, unfortunately, there will be a way to be able to, that a good attorney will argue that they got the right to go to the court. And so.
Well, any good attorney can find any crack in the wall, you know, get through, so.
You know.
Yeah, I see that. Like, again, I greatly appreciate all the hard work the OP has done to expedite this, and I'm sure DOE is very grateful too for this. They're gonna need this. Okay, so other than that, oh, there is, when I was talking with the Oversight Chair, regarding changing the law to incorporate a fine or a penalty to those individuals who just want to obstruct the process or don't allow someone to get the gig because they were, they didn't have it, or they lost the bid, and so they're upset and they just want to file a protest to delay. Can we put anything in here to this, to the OPA? Can we put anything in this legislation? Or do we have to follow the guidelines of what the current law that was passed that created this, that we can incorporate a fine to anybody who does that?
I could not in good conscience recommend that to the legislature.
You could not in good conscience recommend any kind of fine?
Because procurement appeal by its very nature is to allow for, for people to be able to protest. And to put a fine in or to put a bond in would be, would have a chilling effect on protest.
If you can prove that they were doing it, you know, with malice, they're just trying to, to mess things up, and it can be proven.
The courts can do that if they confirm that there's malice, but it's not something that, that I would recommend in good conscience.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much for that, for your honesty. And again, appreciate everyone, and I hope you get to dinner early tonight.
Thank you, Senator Titegwe. Senator Brown?
Thank you, because I'm the last senator here. I certainly appreciate the efforts of the bill. I mean, I think we recognize the challenge that we're in. I've never understood the whole procurement process, to be quite honest with you. I think, you know, the 129-question hoop that has to be jumped in order to procure, we strangle ourselves as a government and make it totally inefficient for us to get the things we need to do, the job we need to do. And, and we're aware that there are certain businesses here that if they don't get the contract, they automatically will protest. We know them by name. I don't even, I'm not even in procurement, and I think at some point, we've gotta figure out how to deal with that, because that's also an abuse. I mean, it's preventing us from doing what we need to do with public money to address public needs, so. I mean, normally, this is not something I would be supportive of, but under the circumstances, if we don't address securing this money, which is dearly needed, and we're not, probably not gonna get this chance again in our career to be able to get these additional funds that DOE must obviously definitely need. So I know it's a very tight timeline. I mean, I'm sure the committee will be reasonable in looking at extending the days, because you've outlined very carefully for both DOE and for the public auditor's office, that it's incredibly short for what you need to execute on your side. But I think we have an expectation of wanting to see this money invested in the school system. And great, you know, if they give us an extension, great, but I think we need to show evidence of every good faith effort that we're putting forward to facilitate the expenditures of these funds for the good and the need of our school system. So I have no questions. I appreciate you taking the time. Certainly, DOE, you were here yesterday, you were here this morning, you're here this afternoon. Thank goodness you don't have to be here tomorrow. I know you have to go back and do the work that you need to do, so thank you. It's good to see you, to our new superintendent. And thank you again to our public auditor, who has extended his afternoon, and the Attorney General's office for being here and providing your testimony as well. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Before we end, is there anybody else that would like to provide testimony that haven't provided thus far? Okay, I just also want to be clear that, you know, part of these regulations allow for mutual agreement, so it doesn't always have to be decision by the public auditor. There is, there's a time in which the parties that is protesting and the agency can come to a mutual agreement. So there is that option. And the other thing, as Senator Titegwe pointed out, that this was done before and with much success. And we're hoping that, you know, this can continue, especially now, that there is a huge need within the Department of Education to bring it up to sanitary requirements so that we can, you know, accommodate all our school community. So I do appreciate everybody's hard work and collaboration. I think that's really critical. And, you know, we look forward to getting this on the floor as soon as possible so we can make sure that should there be a protest, you know, that it can be resolved swiftly. So thank you again. And if there are no further testimonies, we will continue to receive written testimonies up until Wednesday, July 19. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, chairperson on the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research, and Planning. It can be dropped off at the mailboxes here, the Guam Congress Building, or email to office@senatorparas.org. We were now adjourned. The committee, the time is now 6:00 PM. To do as much as you can, have a good evening. Thank you.